Good morning guys. I decided to vlog today. We're just doing an admin day. Um, I'm gonna go back to the well. The lights just turned off. I'm gonna go back to the well, but I think I'm gonna go to the lobby first. I'm gonna be editing today and working on my product portfolio. Doing some research and stuff and like putting together all the stuff that I want to put in it and like seeing how we're gonna build it. But that's the plan for today. So now I just grabbed myself an almond croissant and this banana matcha thing that I'm not too sure about, but we're gonna drink it anyways. And then we're gonna head to the subway to go downtown. So I'll take you guys down there with me so you can see what we get up to. And I still want to go to the Wellington Market. I went last time in the last vlog, but I forgot to go to the store that I meant to go to. So I have to go back. And then maybe we'll do some like window shopping and then come back here. Um, but yeah, it's like 9 o'clock now, so I'll probably head about 9:30 after like people get to work and stuff, because I don't do rush hour. And then yeah, we'll head to where we're going. I think it's about an hour from here on the subway, so not too far. So at, I went to the lobby and then we did, I found a webinar on creating like a portfolio for yourself. It was okay. I had um, found this lady, Dr. Nancy something. I don't remember, but I found her on a podcast. The product something, the product manager. I think that's a podcast. I can link it below though. It's a pretty good podcast if you're looking to get into product. Um, but she had her on as a guest. Chronicles of people not looking where they're going in Toronto. It's actually crazy. She would really just walk right into me if I didn't stop right in front of her. But yeah, anyways, um, yeah, so I found her on that podcast and she does, she specializes in AI product management. So she's basically just talking about her accelerator program for like half of it, which it does look pretty interesting. But I looked on Reddit and a lot of the people were saying like, it's kind of more gimmicky and I just rather not. If I don't have to spend like $5,000, I'd rather not. So yeah, I don't know about that program, but there was some good information in the webinar mainly about like what to put in your portfolio, um, different websites you can host on. I think I'm just gonna do Wix because free. Um, but yeah, it was pretty good. And then after that, I just did my own research. And after I did my own research, I did edit the vlog from the, when I came down here to do the networking event. And I still have to put like text and music and stuff, but I did the rough cuts. So that's pretty good. Now I'm going to the well to shop and to go to the store that I said I wanted to go to. And then I'll probably just use the rest of the time either head back and then work from like where I was or stay down here. Maybe go to, I was gonna go to De Mello, but their matcha actually sucks. I don't know who said it was good, but they lied. I might go to Quantum Coffee and get an actual coffee. Or you know what I could do? Take CTC back up to Yorkville? Yeah, I might just do that. Back up to Yorkville and go to Cafe Ex Pica, because I went there the last time and it was really good. Yeah, I think that's what I'll do, because it's only a couple stops up and then it's pretty close to where I was before. I think it's like 30 minutes from there to Young and Shepherd, give or take. So I think we'll do that, but yeah. On my way to the well, I think I'm gonna stop in a couple stores for sure. I'm gonna go check out Peugeot again. Um, not that I'm gonna buy anything, but I wanna see it again because the last one was kind of rushing. And yeah, let me pay attention to these instructions though, because I'm geographically challenged. And if I don't look at the instructions, I'll get lost, even though I was just here and I've been doing this walk a lot, but I'll get lost for sure. So let me pay attention. Thank you for the nice name. Oh my gosh. Now I'm looking for something to eat. I don't, I feel like I don't like to lie to you. That's what I'm made of. When can I come to these type of places? They have a bunch of like ramen and stuff. I don't think any of those things. Let's see. I don't know. I don't eat fried chicken. I don't really wanna burger. The only place that looks like it could potentially locate is this little little eastern place. Oh, there's a Jamaican shop. Oh. They have something decent. I doubt it. I don't trust Jamaican food in Toronto. The only place I've ever had that was a Sepai Nese, no less. I've had, I had two hot dogs. Real jerk when it first like opened was okay. Now I don't know. The last time I had it was whatever. And then pato, pato was okay. Pato was pretty good actually. But I don't think I'm good at that, so I don't know. They have, oh no, no, no. Not one of us have a check out. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know why they have those type of establishments and they just hire anyone they can. Do it, no. Smashovers? Honestly, I don't think I want any of this. Maybe I'll just have a sip. This is not, this is not good. I know they have a make it home try to do it. Maybe I'll do that. It's exciting. What the hell is? Amigo? Three types of cheese. There's shrimp and these. So much pressure. I don't like them. Well, I'm getting, I'm just gonna go shopping. Sounds. Hold on. They can't afford. That's just that. I still fix it on the same. Alright, yeah. Let's go find some shops. Maybe we'll find something there. I did get my Ollie box, but this is what I came for, so I mean, I guess that's fine. See if we can find maybe a snack. Or maybe I'll go to Mandy's and get a salad, but I feel like, tell me someday. I might be busy. It's busy in here and it's a Tuesday. I don't, I don't think I go to work. Wow, I'm not a. Alright, yeah. We're just gonna show you. Yeah, let's find out if there's any food around here. Cause I've literally been walking around this whole time. No food. I was gonna go into um, Peugeot, but then I realized if I go in there, I don't wanna spend money and I don't want to spend money. That was not the plan. So no, we're not gonna go in there. And I was thinking about getting a salad at Mandy's, but then I also thought, I haven't eaten like food food all day. I've had like smoothies and like little things like that. The most food food I had is an almond croissant and that's not food. So I don't think I want a salad. I want something with substance, like pasta. So I'm gonna see if Gusto is nearby. If it is, I might just go over there. Might find my way back to where I came from, because honestly, I'm even tired from walking around. Okay. So we decided to go to Gusto. By we, I mean me, because it's just me. But yeah, I was gonna go to Yorkville, but honestly, it's kind of far and I don't want to. And then I'm gonna wanna go to the cafe, but I won't have time. By the time I get there, it'll be like 3:00 and then I'll have like a little bit of time and then I'll just have to get right up. So it doesn't make sense. So I'm gonna go to Gusto and then head back to where I came from. I should've just gone to Gusto straight, but I wanted to come look at the well. Very unfruitful, but. I mean, we got our steps in. I'm doing a step challenge with my boyfriend and his friends and I'm smoking them. I'm smoking them. These people don't walk at all. I have, I think I have 8K steps already today. And they have, I think the next like runner up is like 3. My goal today was like 15 though. I don't know if I'm gonna get there. I could. I definitely, it's possible. It's 100% possible, but I don't know if I will. But yeah, we're going to Gusto. I'm probably gonna get the truffle pasta thing I usually get with the chicken. And maybe I'll get a drink. I don't think so though. I always say that and I end up getting regular. Ooh, maybe I'll get a wine. I've been liking wine recently. But we'll see once I get there. Okay, I made it. It's actually gotten pretty hot out here. When I first left my house, it was like 10 degrees. Now I think it's a good 20, 20 something and it's sunny. So doing away with this is part of the outfit, but it's gotta go because it's actually quite hot, not gonna lie. But luckily I got a little bag when I went to the well, so I'm gonna put it in there. And I think I'll take this opportunity to continue reading my book. I'm not sure what I'm gonna get yet. Um, I'm pretty sure what I'm gonna get though, because I always get the same thing when I come here, which is the Mafalde. I've, okay, the, the truffle pasta. Okay, I don't know. Yeah, with um, grilled chicken. That's usually what I get here. So I think I'm gonna get that again. Yeah. Because I could look through this whole menu, but I don't know what half of it means and I know for a fact that that thing is good. And then let's look at wines now. This is a big list. Look at this. I'm not, I'm not as well versus I used to be. I don't know what I like anymore. I know I wanna white, because pasta, white sauce. Yeah, I don't know what this means. Not gonna lie to you. No idea. Um, okay. Maybe I'll just get like a rosé. Is it a bird? Oh dear. This is why I don't sit outside. Is it birds? No. Okay. Yeah, I think I'm just gonna ask the lady for her recommendation and I'll go with that. Yeah, we ended up getting samplers of a couple of them just because um, well, for one, I was just gonna go and like see if there's like a riesling on there and just order that. They don't have rieslings. So I said, okay, whatever is the most similar to a riesling. Um, so she's bringing me a Sauvignon Blanc and what's she say? Pecorino? Something. I don't know. Yes. Yeah. Either way, it's gonna be white wine and then I'm definitely gonna get this same pasta I get all the time. And I'm gonna read my book. It's gonna be fun. And then we're gonna head back because there's no point in staying out here or staying down here rather. I have nothing else to do and I don't have that much time. So I wanna be back before 5:00. I, well, I have to be back before 5:00 because that's when my ride is leaving. So we're gonna read this book. I try, I wanna get past the in, the preface and get into the book because right now I think I am, yeah, I'm, I just got to the introduction. So hopefully I can just finish the introduction and get into chapter one, because I do wanna finish this by next week. Because I actually need, I want to use it to implement something um, for my portfolio. I think I'm gonna do a couple of new projects or at least one new project. And then I will use what I have already and then also do like some, you know, like the what if projects that I was talking about. Um, but yeah, that's the plan. So let me get reading and then I'll bring you guys back so you can see me taste the wine and then I'll tell you which one is good. And if you come here, you can try that one too. Cause I don't like dry wine, but I like, like not too sweet, especially with food. Not too sweet, but still not like dry grape taste. So yeah. I tried both. This is the pecorino. This is a Sauvignon. I got, I went with the Sauvignon because it tasted like more like fruity, I guess. They're both good though. You can tell I'm still learning how to use this camera. Uh, yeah, I was just trying to figure out which button. I know on this, on the mic, you can actually start filming and you would think it would be the little recording button. I don't know who the UX person was on this, but really? It's actually the Bluetooth button to start recording. So that's stupid, but you know, that's how it works. But we got our wine. And I can really tell that like when I pour wine for myself at home, I'd be heavy handed because this is not even a third of a glass. I would've filled this glass, not to the rim, but like pretty darned close. Even with such a big glass, because I feel like this would be like almost a full bottle of wine, like those little small ones in this one glass. So I'm gonna leave that until my food gets here because I need something to drink when it's here. Plus I'm hungry and I don't wanna chug wine. But yeah, so far this book is actually pretty good, even though I know I'm just in the intro. But it's interesting because this is the guy who like coined, I guess you could say, the sprint. So if you're familiar with like agile methodologies, sprints, this is what we run on. Can bands and stuff like that. You're gonna have your sprint and however long it is. Um, but he's kind of just explaining how he was introducing it to different companies. Um, I believe he said he was with Google when he first came out with it, which is pretty cool. To me, I feel like if you don't care about like techy stuff or like product in general or like just like the method and the organization behind it, because I like to be organized, you won't care about this. But to me, this is pretty cool. So now like the intro, he's like with a, he did it with startups because they have um, a lower threshold for, for risk just because it's a startup. They only have certain amount of money and they need to do things quickly just to make sure that this is actually gonna work. So they can't be doing long drawn out things. So sprints are perfect. Um, so yeah, he's explaining how he's bringing it to, to startups through Google Venture, which is like their program to fund startups. I don't know if that's still a thing, but I feel like it would be. Um, but yeah, that's where I am right now with the book. So if I find any other like interesting things, I'll definitely let you guys know. But the book is Sprints by Jake Knapp. Knapp? Yeah, that's what I'm reading. So we got our food and it looks so good. I'm just gonna put it on YouTube because I cannot read and eat at the same time. I need to do one or the other. So I'm gonna see if I can find something to watch on YouTube. I think A Wilkie just posted, so I'm gonna watch her. Um, if you don't watch her, you need to. She has like a very nice, organized life and I love that. So yeah, we're gonna dig in. I'll show you guys how the food looks and then I'll probably just come back when I'm on my way back. Um, I'm gonna walk, depending on the time, I might walk up to Union and then take the train from there. Or I'll just walk to the stop after St. Andrew, because that's the one I usually take. Um, but I wanna get my steps in. I'm already almost at 10K, so I'm beating these people by like a mile. I'm beating these people by like a mile.